Meeting come to order. Road call shows all board members are present with Mr. Sean Gillie joining us virtually. If everybody would now please stand for invocation and pledge to the flag. Mr. Hall, would you please lead us in prayer?
All right. Heavenly Father God, we come here to pray tonight, Lord, thank you, God, for all board of the blessings you've given us, God. Thank you for allowing Sean and Will to be here with us tonight, God, and getting better, Lord, we pray, God. Thank you for that, Lord. We ask, Lord, that you just forgive us where we've fed, God, before we fall shorter, Lord. We pray, Heavenly Father God, in Mark Quonlin's school year, that you just bless us to make good decisions and do what's best for students and our employees and did a good job and have a good, safe school year. For it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And this is the regular scheduled board meeting for the Letcher County Board of Education for July 28, 2025, here in the Lyndle Smith Conference Room. The first item on our agenda is approval of minutes from the June meeting.
Have motion to approve the minutes.
I say them.
Got a motion in the second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I opposed. Eyes have it. Motion passes. Next item we have is student school and staff recognition.
First July, we don't have a school this month.
Next item we have is public participation of guests. Zach from Trace Creek. Good.
We'll start off with the football field. Done. It has been 100% completed. There is only one item left to do. To pass inspection, we had to get the extra emergency light over into the mechanical room of the locker room building. Contractor received the light to replace the one we switched out last week. He's going to be here this week to put it in, and it's 100% completed. The AE building, the lead paint is 100% abated. Those guys finished up last week. Painters are in there. They got two rooms, I believe, left to dry for all the ceilings. They're working on first coating the walls and some places even second coating the walls. We got our electrician in there. He is started on the demo. He's roughly 50% complete with the demo, and he's going at a good pace. It's starting to actually show some signs of moving forward. You guys got any questions?
Thank you. You too. Thank you. Be careful.
Aaron from ER Assist.
My name's Erin McCollough. I work for ER Assist in the face of the rate management for the disaster recovery from flooding. So I've come today because I think in the last meeting, there were some questions that maybe didn't get answered, and I was asked today to come and speak. So I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
I was just wondering about where we had got turned down for the reimbursement for the football field and that.
Yeah. So unfortunately, we did put in an appeal. Initially, we got what they call a determination memo, which means that they're going to defund the project. They're not going to give us any money for it. And so there's an appeal process. We put in a first appeal, and that was reviewed by the regional office in Atlanta, and it was denied. So the second part of that is to put in a second appeal, and we've done that. We worked with a lawyers group out of Florida who specialize in this type of thing. And so they've put together a very compelling appeal. We submitted that a week ago today. Typically, it takes about a year for those to be reviewed, for a decision to be made on those. So we won't know anything for quite some time, but I do feel good about the work that we submitted, and I feel like we answered all of the questions that FEMA had.
Okay. So let's hurry up and late.
It's hurry up and late. Yeah. Unfortunately, I wish I had a better timeline for you on that.
Anybody else have any questions?
How did this happen?
So in situations where FEMA is funding schools, you know, FEMA is very agreeable when it comes to money for the restoration of a school facility, but when it comes to recreational facilities, it's much more difficult to get them on board with that. While it is eligible, it is difficult to get that approved. And sometimes it does take a separate process in order for them to see that it's.
How did you not know if this was going to happen?
Well, I mean, technically, it is eligible. Right. So we're going into it saying, we're doing everything correctly. We're submitting all of our documents. We didn't know, and you don't know, going in, whether or not it's going to be a fight, and this time it is, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Well, if you have any kind of updates regarding on the reimbursement process for our operation process at school.
Yeah, so I touched these with Kentucky Emergency Management on Friday, and it's basically told, let's see, that they're a little bit behind because they're doing kind of double duty with some of the work that they're having to do, and that they would let us know when that payment is coming due. So we'll have a heads up, give that heads up before, you know, they get to.
But they need us obligated, the two last work schools are obligated?
Yeah, the only thing that's not obligated is our Virginia Potter, and that's a little bit behind, but it is working through the process, and there's no reason to think of why we need to be obligated. So going to deal with that.
Anybody?
Anything else? Okay. All right. Thank you all for having me tonight. Thank you, Erin, thank you for being here.
We also have a representative of BSN Sports.
Hello, I'm Matthew Hudson. I represent Bluegrass Sports Nation. First off, thank you guys for letting us be part of your school system last year. We did the agreement. We worked with Mr. Hall and got the contract in place, and we covered the varsity sports. We actually ended up doing some more sports on top of that. But we had a great year. I think we all stayed some day. We did get to cover, started out with high school football. Had a great season, had some great people. Got to hire two of the high school kids to work with us, plus two more. We had Mark Young and me work on multiple football games, but on the way against, I had Andrew Porcelli. And we picked up other people along the way. So we've actually got to pull quite a few people around here. Had some great numbers as far as people watching. We averaged about 15,000 people on the regular season games. And then the playoff game in Bull County was actually our third highest rated anything throughout the year. We had over 55,000 people watch that one. So, yeah, that was a great game.
That is great.
And we, as I said, 55,000 people watched the Bull-Letcher game. We're back, isn't it? If that happened, that actually made me buy some stuff. That was a bad night. Anyway, besides that, on top of that, we did the high school girls' basketball, high school boys' basketball. We lived in some middle school basketball, some middle school football. That's what the views were great. Now, in the contract, what I want to talk about is they said at the end of the year, we would, whatever revenue we had for electric central, we would split down the middle, give you all a check. Well, the revenue was negative 1,800 bucks. So we lost money as far as electric, but that was kind of expected. Anytime you're kind of in Spain and grow, going to a new area, that's kind of expected. But already this year, we have four new businesses because of what we did last year. You guys let us do, that have already reached out and said, hey, we want to advertise it to you guys, and those four companies themselves would get rid of the shortfall and make profit. So next year would look much better. That brings me to part two, is that I was going to ask you guys if you guys would be agreeable, if we kept the exact same contract we did last year. But I wanted to add one clause, and I worked with Mr. Hall on that. If something was to happen, because I hate not having something for y'all. So if something was to happen, at the end of the year, just choose any organization within your school district, and we will do a donation of $1,500 towards that organization. So that way, no matter what, it kind of covers that. Does anybody have any questions, anything about the last year or next year?
It was a great opportunity for our parents that couldn't travel to be, to be able to watch banks.
Yeah, and that's always our main benefit. That's one of our fun things to do is always had a problem with the announcers, like, hey, ask who's on here the furthest away. You know, you sit in, well, I'm in India, Illinois, last year. There's one woman kept watching. We couldn't get away from her, but she was always watching from Ireland. I just quit asking because we can't beat that much, you know? Where are they from? Well, they're watching in Ireland. Okay. So, but like I said, it is a great opportunity for those people that can't beat that. Thank you, guys. Any questions?
No, I was just going. So if you've worked with you on the contract, you know, something's good, do we need to vote tonight to do that?
As I said, we actually need a contract in the next board meeting, but we can go ahead and get started.
Okay. Is there any other public participation? Hearing none, we'll move right along with reports, superintendent's comments.
First, I want to talk about our employee raises and pay. As we talked with some of our classified employees last month, I've gotten some numbers for you. At the end of the year, we had a difference of 480,000. And so I've done a chart for you to look at how that factors into a raise for our employees. But I also gave you some information. We talked with bus drivers particularly about how other districts' pay is greater. And so what we did is we looked at our surrounding districts around us and gathered some information on their pay scales, and while their pay is more, they do their contracts a little bit differently. So some don't offer the amount of hours that we offer, so once you run the numbers, we're pretty even with those districts around us. But I do want to comment to the board that we need to look at all of our classified salary scales. Like, we started two years ago with the Cook and, I think it's Cook Bakers, and started trying to change those scales and move them up that chain. And so I want, I'm going to propose to the board that we do a 3% raise across the board because that's what we can afford with what we've had left over, and that's classified and certified. But also the commitment to look at those salary scales and take the time to go through that and make it happen. When you change a salary scale, it takes more than one year, more than one meeting to be able to put the bills for that. But I believe, we all want the best for our board, for our bus drivers as well as every employee that we have. And I think this board is committed to doing that and demonstrated that year in and year out with employee raises. And we started two years ago with Cook Bakers. We started that salary up. We started that, at the base salary, we moved that up. And so I want to continue to do that with our bus drivers and our other employees as well.
We've got to work on our lowest type work. I know this year, 3% seems deep, probably kind of lower, but we need to get, I'll make sure we can have a way to raise the salary.
Under that, we're looking at adding an hour to the price because there are six hours that are currently, we want to add an hour to make that seven. We have, was it last year or two years ago, the board passed a stipend for instructional assistants to work with our most needy students. We requested a change to that in order to keep our instructional assistants in our special needs population in our units with the most needy. We've asked for a change in that, and then approval for the health department nurses for those 10 NTI days. All of that would follow then.
So you're recommending the 3%?
Aye.
And that does fall within the surplus from this past year's budget? So I'll make a motion that we provide a 3% raise to all employees.
Let me add, because it is July 28th, we've already paid some of our extended employees, our people who are on the extended contract, and I would need that to be retroactive so we can go back to just the month of July and make that difference up.
So I'll make the motion that we add the 3% raise to be retroactive to cover the month of July as well.
I say them.
Got a motion in the second to do the 3% raise and make it retroactive. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I opposed. Eyes have it. Next item we have is school-based decision-making council minutes.
Let me clarify, Robert. With that motion, you're also approving the first hours instructional assistance and the health department, all of them on motion. I just want to make sure we're clear.
Everything that you have.
Oh, yes. All as fast as presented. Okay. Just making sure.
I guess that would have been a better way for me to say that we're as fast as presented, but.
That's my vote. Thank you.
So, I mean, I'm.
Maybe we're doing it one at a time.
So is everybody good with just amending that motion, and is that legal?
Is that included in your decision?
It is.
So next item we have is the school-based decision-making councils minutes. Is everything in order there, Mr. Hall? Monthly curriculum and instruction report.
Hey, guys. One of the big things that happened this month was our principal workshop. So we had five days during which our principals came in and worked on different things to prepare us for the year ahead of us. So this summer, we analyzed and worked on leadership strengths and setting goals for improvement. We looked at school safety and threat assessment protocols. We got updates from DPP, technology, special education, new policies, finance, and instruction. We worked with our Kentucky Regional Innovation Specialist, Crystal Dooley, on our Portrait of a Learner and Vibrant Learning. We learned strategies for increasing student communication and collaboration, attended a Vibrant Learning collaborative in London, and received training from the Kentucky Department of Education on evaluation and giving meaningful feedback. So we got a lot in in those five days, but it was a good five days to kind of set the tone for the following year. You guys should have, I hope you have, our Portrait of a Learner, and I'd like to ask you guys to approve that today. The Portrait of a Learner is a system that's been developed by our community, and several of you guys took part in that process, and I know Kobe was there. But our community came up with what we want our students to be able to do and who we want them to be by the time they graduate from us. And so our community chose four components, and it spells out LCPS. So the four components we wanted to focus on were lifelong learner, compassionate citizen, proficient problem solver, and skilled communicator. So after you guys approve, our teacher leaders are going to start determining what this is going to look like at each grade level. So what does it look like for a kindergartner to be a good communicator? What does it look like for a first grader to be a compassionate citizen? And then we'll start building our work around that. The other thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about is pretty exciting, Ronnie and I geeked out a little bit over it, but you guys had asked for our social studies teachers to look at embedding some curriculum around Letcher County and the history of Letcher County. And so we had our middle school social studies teachers come in as a committee and decide on a unit that they could teach right at the beginning of the school year, and they looked really interesting. You guys have those descriptions in your packets that you can look at, what they'll be doing at sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And they were so excited and enthusiastic about bringing that to the kids, so that's an exciting thing, too. Do you guys have questions about any of that?
We do need a motion to vote for Portrait of a Learner approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve that. Motion in the second to approve Portrait of a Learner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Usual sound of I. I oppose. Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
And just to touch on that Letcher County history, Ronnie has a brother that should be included in that. I don't know if he's told many of you, but we were lucky enough on our senior trip that he was walking guard duty at the turn of the unknown soldier, and they had the changing of the guard, so we got to speak with him afterwards.
That's awesome. Have to make sure this is a prison one, Ronnie. Thank you, guys.
Next item we have is monthly maintenance and transportation report. You look like you just left the lake.
I wish. It's just so hot. It's been hot for the last three or three weeks. If you all look in your board report, you can see our transportation and maintenance. Right now with transportation, we're just getting our buses serviced for the summer, getting ready to put them all back out on the routes when school starts back in a few weeks. We've got a couple of things, freshman orientations, and those things, we're going to be running buses for those students as well. On the maintenance side, right now, we're having all the building principals and doing all their checks and make sure if we run into any problems, we've been working a lot on the air conditioners, as you can imagine. We had the sprinkler problem at the high school, so we're trying to get that taken care of, get that building fixed back up so it'll be ready when the kids come back to it. So we're pretty busy right now, trying to get ready for school to start back up. Do I have any questions about anything on there?
Thanks, sir. Next item we have is technology, presentation of annual Kentucky K-12 cybersecurity health check.
So it is the one time of year again that we have to go through the process of updating you all on a cybersecurity health check. And this year, the best thing that I can describe to you is that the state has awarded a contract for a new company called Identity Automation. So this new company is going to take over and eventually become our main place where we log into everything. So instead of having to log into Microsoft and Google and all these different places, we'll log into one place, and it'll automatically let us go to all the others. Along with that, they have some software that kind of monitors for when passwords are either leaked or stolen or things like that. So right now, we change passwords once every six months. That's kind of no longer the best practice. The best practice is if you have a good password and nobody has gotten your good password, then don't change it. Don't make it harder than it has to be. So I can announce to everybody that once we do get to this new system, unless your password shows up on one of those breach notification things or something like that, you'll be able to keep that good password as long as you don't let it get out to anybody. So that'll make life just a little bit easier for everybody, I hope.
So you're telling me I've been doing this right all along?
Well, as people change their mind, yeah, I guess so. The other thing that we will be doing, and this is a recommendation from the state, the state had a committee of districts across the state that came together to try to look at what we can do to help secure student accounts as well. So with our selection, what we've chosen to do, you know, with your account, you have multi-factor authentication, where you have to get your phone out and put those numbers back in, in addition to your password. Well, with kids, especially younger kids, they don't have phones to do that. So you've got to have some other way to do multi-factor with those kids. So with this new system, they're going to be able to select a series of pictures. And once they put their username and their password in, they'll come up and it'll say, pick your picture, the one you remember off this page. So that is another step that a hacker would just be having to try to guess at, but those kids know it, so they click it and go on. So it's using pictures to do a multi-factor. So we increase our security tremendously because we're looking at from third grade through 12th grade, having students use that picture as that extra factor. So we're protecting that many more of our accounts now. For K through two, we're going to use a QR code that has both their username and password embedded in it. So if the camera's working on their Chromebook, they hold their QR code up in front of their Chromebook, they log completely in, and a kindergartner doesn't have to learn a big long username and password. So hopefully, things are going to get simpler for teachers, get more secure, and we'll make it a little easier on staff by keeping a good password longer. Password stays 15 characters, unfortunately, so you still got to make up your sentence. But, so, that's mostly what I wanted to give you tonight. There's other things that are going on security-wise and stuff across, I mean, I had a report last week of some servers that KDE maintains here. I didn't even know what they were, but I got a report saying that there was a vulnerability. And I submitted it to KDE, and they're like, okay, this organization agreed that this was a false positive, so they've corrected their tool. So we got all kinds of things going on, but the thing that impacts everybody the most is those user accounts. And we're making those a lot more secure, but easier for people to use and deal with. Any questions about anything security you're writing?
Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Next item we have is monthly student attendance and enrollment report.
I don't have a report in there because we don't have kids at school to give you an attendance report, but I do have some positives to talk about from last year. Our chronic absenteeism, which is all of our absences, not just unexcused, so that's, you know, that's anything that we have each day, has dropped almost 13% from 23, 24, which is a huge drop. And for that to be all absences, that's a really big positive because, you know, even a excused absence is okay, but in the grand scheme of things, it's not because they're missing interruptions. So for that to drop that big is a very big positive. Also, the ADA raised almost 4%. It's a little over 3% this year from the year before, which is also good because that's your daily attendance, and that also is what affects funding. So that has moved in a positive direction as well. We're not at 92%, but we're inching our way there slowly and positively. Our, the Kentucky law stayed the same this year for truancy. I do have to file at 15 on students with unexcused absences. Of course, you know, our own board policy is different. I could file at 6, but the state law requires us to file at 15. So that remains in effect. We're also going to keep up with our attendance campaign that has worked. We think that is what is helping us a little bit more, our positive ads on the radio, social media, you know, we've been inundating that throughout the year. We're going to keep that show up, stand up, succeed campaign going this year, and tomorrow, our district attendance team is going to Corbin to meet with to do kind of a refresh on our attendance campaign for this coming school year, and also to talk about some different data over the past year. So we are slowly getting there, I think, hopefully. Any questions? Whatever Kobe says, he didn't make those cookies. He bothered. I don't read them. I don't read them.
I'll personally toast each one of them, and I can tell you.
We're on your side, Kobe.
Next item we have is report from student representative to the board.
Kobe, I'm going to give us the recipe.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kobe Ambery. I'm the new student representative. Uh, I hope you all having a great summer. Even though school hasn't officially started yet, there's already been a lot going on with our students. Over the summer, three students were selected to attend the governor's school for the arts. Myself for film and photography, Sophia Hogg for creative writing, Kobe Hemick also for creative writing. GSA was an amazing opportunity for us to grow in our art, meet other students from across the state, and experience what it's like to take our passion seriously. We're really proud that we got to represent our school and our community. And yes, we lived on dining hall food and without our phones for three weeks. So safe to say we're ready for college. GEARP has also been helping students get ready for the new school year. Students in the class of 2025 that are enrolled in secondary school are receiving school supplies like keyboards, pens, paper, and other materials to help them start college off strong. This will be a huge help, especially for students getting a head start on college. Another great opportunity this summer has come from Cowan Community Center in conjunction with PRI. Students have been placed in internships across the county, working at local businesses and organizations, gaining work experience and knowledge. These placements aren't just for high, high school students. They're also, they also include recent graduates and current college students. Nothing teaches you how to be responsible like realizing you can't hit the snooze button when you've got people depending on you. Looking ahead to the start of the school, we have some exciting programs and activities lined up. One big focus is Link Crew. As we all know, starting high school can be a little scary. New building, new people, and a whole new routine. It's like walking into a new world where everyone else already knows the secret handshake. Link Crew is made up of upperclassmen who help freshmen feel welcome and comfortable right away. They'll be leading orientation activities and icebreakers to help incoming students get to know each other, the school, and hopefully lower those first day nerves. Because let's be honest, finding your classes and getting to know people can really feel like trying to solve a Rubik's Cube. Well, I'm Kobe. Speaking of getting kids acclimated, sports are a great way of getting kids used to an environment because it breaks that large student body down to one team, one family. When I was starting high school, playing football really helped me not to be scared of the transition. With that, fall sports are getting ready to kick off. So while those of us who don't play a fall sport are lounging on the couch, these athletes are putting in the work to have a great season. And we're looking forward to a season full of school spirit, competition, and maybe a few dramatic closer speakers. National Honor Society is already getting started on their community service. They're starting the year off assisting in getting orientation ready for all students. They're always one of the first groups to step up when the school needs something done. And finally, college application season is creeping up on us seniors. There's already been a mix of mild panic and as we start writing essays and chasing deadlines and Googling how to make your personality sound interesting in 250 words. It's a stressful time, but it's exciting to see our class taking these big steps. This is where futures really start to take shape. That's everything I have for now. I'm really looking forward to the year ahead and to start this year off, go Cougs. Thanks for laying me here.
Set the bar high, Kobe.
Next item we have is report from LCTO, LCESP.
Good, Ms. Taffeta-Mate. I think you presented that group. I remembered to call you by me.
It's okay. I signed my name today and it was Tabitha Craft, and then I remembered how you first got the answer.
I get points for remembering.
I'm proud. Uh, hello, my name's Tabitha Mate. I am a special ed teacher here in Letcher County, and I'm also the vice president of the LCTO, uh, organization. And we are getting everything ready for opening day, the getting everybody to come in and everything like that. And also, I know I said it last time, it sounds redundant, and I know we just talked about a 3% raise, but I know the money coming in for the buses, so if you could consider maybe a 5% raise coming for across the board, not just for teachers, but also for our classified tech people as well. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you all so much for the offering.
Thank you, Taffeta.
Next item we have is old business.
Our attention to, um, is the Senate, the policy with Senate Bill 181. And we have the act that we're going to talk about, your approval down in consent items. But we're going to recommend Parents' Square, uh, but that's in the policy update. Um, we also have the policy where, um, it changes that our kinder meds have to be given by a physician or the physician's order, but we don't have to take that new policy. It's not law. It's something that was recommended. But our, our policy committee recommends that we keep it as it is. And then we recommend that the maternity leave piece start the 25, 26 school year. That's given, um, 30 days for paid maternity leave. Other than that, they're all. Did you go?
So now do we need to vote on that tonight?
Now that's how they're presenting. I just making sure you all understand that's what's, uh, in there.
So we'll move along to new business, uh, consent items.
You have to, uh, vote approve the second reading.
That's what I asked you.
I'm sorry. I thought you meant the separate, the separate policy that I needed to, no, we do need a motion, but I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the second reading of the policy and procedures. Motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye opposed. Eyes have it. Motion passes. Now we'll move along to the consent items.
Yes. I'll just briefly go over each of the consent items. Um, the first is a contract with our speaker for opening day sponsored by PRI, our grant partners. Second is the approval of short school day versus students for student. Third is the, uh, approval for three district credit cards for a $6,000 limit each that will allow our different groups to travel more safely. Four is a copier agreement. We can only approve that for one year instead of how it has listed as five. So adjust that for one year. Five is the approval of meal service provided for KRC's adult care program. Six is the final approval for the evaluation plan for the five-year plan. We adjusted it to, uh, make the new regulations around observations or formal evaluations being every five years instead of every three. Um, seven is a rental agreement with the Kentucky State Police for a car show. Eight is an overnight trip for soccer. Nine is a service agreement for Tyler Technologies with advanced fleet maintenance. 10 is the, um, roof project, which is the finalization and approval, the finalization of the roof project at the Old Vocational School. And then 11 is approval of Google Workspace for Education, Microsoft 365 for Education, Infinite Campus, and Parents' Square as our traceable and inspectable methods for direct communications between employees and volunteers and adult, and students, I'm sorry. So Parents' Square is the new act that we are, uh, looking forward to use for that communication piece. 12 is an add-on and it's a rental agreement for Michael Murphy with the wrestling for Fleming on Gym and has the, uh, insurance attached.
You've heard the reading of all the consent items? Got a motion in the second to approve all of the consent items as, uh, presented?
Can I just, just a second? Did you mention, uh, here's a copy of your agreement?
Did you? We'll let you handle it.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye opposed. Eyes have it. Motion passes. The next item is business and financial. An approval of financial report, approval of payment of claims, transfers, and salaries.
Kobe, that was a good job. You did a good, that was good. Um, uh, with, uh, real quick before we end up the, uh, stuff with the R system. I know that that, uh, football field appeal process takes a year. That just blows my mind. But you also look at the buildings. We've been back in West Whitesburg, or I'm sorry, Whitesburg Middle School and Martha Jane Potter since December of 22, or January of 23, and we still not got any money for those construction projects. You know, that, that puts a burden on your budget because you've got to cover that. You know, if we hadn't had the EK Safe Funds that state provided, it'd be pretty tough. Um, which leads me to our balance. Uh, if you guys will look at that in your packet, um, you can see, um, it's down significantly. You know, we usually have a balance in there of anywhere from 11 to 13 million, and we're down to 5.6 million. So that's, uh, that, that's, that's a rough for the end of the year. But also, there's a lot of expenses that take place at the end of the year too that, uh, one thing, this does not include our bus reimbursement. Uh, it's not factored into that. Um, also, your, um, we had several large federal reimbursements that are not, that we spent out of our fund that we get reimbursed for in July. That's not factored in there. Um, so there are several things that go into that that'll build that back up. But, you know, any issue has come back up, but I just wanted you all to not fall out of your chair because that's, I almost did when I seen that come down the hall to Denise. All right, don't panic. But this is going to get better, hopefully. Uh, but if you look at your Fund One balance, uh, 13,195,000, $144.35. Uh, Fund Two, special revenue, 9,886,302.93. Uh, Fund 21, your district activity funds, 30,750.80. Your capital outlay, 584,009.45. Uh, your building fund, Fund 320, uh, 496,123.80. Your construction fund, this is your Fund 360, all the construction projects, 820,907.92. Uh, you notice debt service is zero, and that's because we moved those funds out of 320 to pay for your debt, your bond payment. That's another 1.2 million dollar payment that comes out in June, so that's factored in there as well. Uh, your fiscal servant cash to fiscal agents, uh, 34,150.80. And food service, 359,079.79. For a total cash investments of 5,633,784.26. Okay, so that's that. Uh, in your packet, you also have your, uh, you know, shows the balance from the checks for the month. But you got your Fund One, uh, salaries, they're all included in there. Uh, expenses for the year, um, for different object codes and then the month to date. It's also got your Fund One everything, as I call it. That's all your object codes greater than the salary code. That's everything that we expend out of Fund One. And your final piece in that packet is Fund 51, salaries. It's the last page. So that's a good stuff in there. Make a motion to pay our bills.
I'll second that motion. Motion in the second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye opposed. Eyes have it. Motion passes.
People appreciate your building. I'm going to go.
Next item we have is personnel, review of superintendent's report on personnel.
You can see the summer's been a busy time for personnel as we're gearing up and filling positions for the new year. I think as of today, we have all certified teaching physicians filled. There's a couple of, uh, classified positions that we're still working on, but all of our teachers, um, are hired and ready to go.
Next item on the agenda is other, and it says executive session. But before we do that, I would like to bring a couple of things to the board. Number one, I had a gentleman text me the other day and he asked me, he told me that we have a flagpole up at Martha Jane Potter. And he said that we've not had a flag on it in a couple of years now. And he was just wanting to make sure that we could try and get a flag on that one as well as all of our others, at all of our other campuses. And I assured him that I would bring that up.
Will take care of it.
Thank you.
I know that we were, uh, talking to somebody in the public about the, um, new football game and what time to go back to.
And one other thing, I, I talked to, actually, one of my neighbors. He has written a book and had it published. It's a children's book. And I, I wanted to talk about trying to get that book put in our school libraries. He said that he's, he's actually working. He's going to try and do it as an entire series. So.
You're just getting that contact information.
I, I just thought, you know, a local, a local author, he was looking in our libraries. So that's, that was what I had.
Those are easy to take care of.
The next thing we have now is executive session under KRS 61.810. Christopher Hensley versus Letcher County Board of Education, key number 251761, and Troy Dingus Edel versus Letcher County Board of Education, uh, Letcher Circuit Court case number 25CI00141. Uh, I'll need a motion that we enter executive session at 7:15 PM.
Make a motion that we enter executive session.
I'll second that motion. Uh, we have a motion in the second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye opposed. Eyes have it. Motion passes. We are in executive session.